What makes up East Harlem is it's a mixture of different ethnicities. It's predominantly Hispanic, a lot of Afro-American, a lot of Asian, Chinese. I know there's a lot of people from the Middle East moving in as well. And it's been a multi-racial, multicultural neighborhood.
District 8 happens to have the highest proportion of individuals in deep poverty, who are having most trouble affording buses and subways. This district, it's sort of a microcosm of all the problems of inequity in the city of New York and the deep issues that we're going to have to confront to bring this under control.
East Harlem is known to always throw a black party for no reason. The diversity, it is so great to see so many different races together and partaking in activities and so forth.
As we do have a lot of people that are still in the low socioeconomic rung, and while there's a lot of justification going on with middle-class people having more money moving in, we still have even in my complex, people who maybe 10, 15 people living to an apartment because they're doing the things that immigrants did at the turn of the last century.
You have issues around deep poverty, around lack of educational opportunity. And one of the things we began picking up was in addition to couldn't afford the rent, couldn't afford transportation. And we're actually in large measure not being able to get to a job, look for a new job. We also recognize that it really starts to confine you to one neighborhood. Public housing is in deep trouble. It has $17 billion in unmet capital needs, and that's why all these horror stories about elevators failing and mold, this is not accidental. It has to do with not providing the capital upkeep to maintain these units in habitable condition. So I think one of the things we're recognizing is that we have to take a much more comprehensive look at development here. And we've been arguing with the state and the city about the various incentives that are offered to developers.
The major issue today that I see in East Harlem is the lack of low-income housing, co-ops, condominiums being built up. So they have to put like a certain amount for senior citizens, low income, and the majority of market rates, the entire population in East Harlem can't fit into those criteria. And we've seen a lot of diversity of people moving in, but it's young, middle class.
I would say the housing, put emphasis on that because if you don't have a roof over your head, you can't do anything. That really has to be addressed. Places that were empty lots for years or stood there or were boarded up, not even torn down, just boarded up with the wood and everything. Why don't you take all of these properties and put low-income housing? This has to be NYCHA. It could still be low-income housing.
I'm looking forward to a promise that they're going to fight for the area, you know, and fight for the city because what's happening here is happening all over the city. Why can't we live in decency instead of scrounging from paycheck to paycheck?
Stop building the shelter, stop putting the money in that. That's just a Band-Aid, that's just a temporary fix. Start building the infrastructure for people so that it can go on from one generation to the next.
There's going to have to be someone who really understands what's going on at the grassroots level, who has visited the bodegas, who's gone into the public housing, who sees how people are getting healthcare. So I think it's going to have to be a combination of in-depth understanding and willingness to stand up and fight for their constituents in a way that perhaps other districts never have to.
Hello, my name is Tamika Mappe. When seeking a leadership position is not always the most experienced or most qualified that is most effective. A role like city council member requires a person with relationship-building skills, someone that can collaborate and work with colleagues to advance legislation that would benefit New York City, while also reaching out and being accessible to district residents and ensuring their voices are being heard. Likewise, relationships should be forged with thought leaders and community activists with bold solutions to the issues that plague our community. It's time for new leadership. Politics, as usual, has left us stuck. We have representatives who are at the mercy of real estate developers and other big-ticket donors, while I just want to represent the people. I am the best person to represent our district because I have a new and fresh approach to tackling issues like affordable housing, living wage, a path to citizenship, homelessness, parental alienation, mental health issues, education, and many others. I'm not the same old same old. I don't just talk a good game, show up to an event, give a speech, and bounce. I stay and I roll up my sleeves, engage and share ideas. I am a community participant. I sit on the board of 596 acres advocating for community land access. I teach aspiring entrepreneurs through the services of We Will Training to support new and future business owners. I also manage 70 leaders and lead 421 young women to reach for their dreams and be an active part of this community. I'm Tamika Mappe, and I'm running for city council in District 8.
My name is Robert Rodriguez, and I'm a lifelong New Yorker and resident of East Harlem El Barrio and proud Assembly member of the 68th Assembly District. Since being elected in 2010, I have prioritized affordable housing, working hard to ensure critical funding was given to NYCHA developments, and to preserve Mitchell Lama buildings, the foundation of affordable housing in our city. District 8 needs experienced representation that understands the issues housing tenants face. If elected, I will continue that work on a local level as well as fight to ensure NYCHA developments receive the repairs they have been promised and help to address the long waiting lists. Throughout my tenure, transportation has also remained a top concern. In addition to fighting for funding for the Second Avenue subway with my Move New York Fare Plan, I have offered new ways to lock in revenue that can be used to upgrade our city's transit, road, and bridge network. It is vital that residents of El Barrio and the South Bronx have access to reliable service and affordable fares. As your city council member, I will work to ensure that Phase 2 of the Second Avenue subway remains on schedule and investigate alternative methods of public transportation. I will also fight for funding that will give residents of District 8 greater access to their waterfront. While in Albany, I was proud to secure funding to build a state-of-the-art East River Esplanade and Pier 107 in East Harlem. But more needs to be done to make this a reality. I know together we can do it and expand waterfront access in the South Bronx. From City Hall, I will be in a better position to increase access to funding for NYCHA, affordable housing, create more jobs, and enhance our quality of life. I'm a hard-working, dedicated, and committed New Yorker, and I look forward to displaying the type of leadership New Yorkers have come to know and expect from me right here on the streets where I grew up.
Hi, my name is Diana Ayala, and I'm running for city council in the 8th Council District. Our community faces many challenges in the years ahead. The growing housing crisis makes it increasingly difficult for families to secure quality, affordable housing, and continues to displace residents that have called El Barrio and the South Bronx home. At the same time, cuts to federal housing programs by the Trump administration worsen the state of disrepair and disinvestment in our city's NYCHA housing complexes. Many more families simply do not have a home of their own. Our small businesses, which form the backbone of our local economy, struggle with rising rents and red tape, and our public schools face overcrowding and limited resources. We have been fortunate to have a champion and Speaker Melissa Mark-Viverito, who has fought to improve our community and address the issues of housing affordability, employment opportunity, education, and public safety. I am proud to have served Speaker Melissa Mark-Viverito and contributed to these critical efforts in this capacity. I helped draft legislation on efforts ranging from the strengthening of tenants' rights to the cracking down of dangerous synthetic marijuana, or K-2, sold in the city. For me, these challenges are personal. I know what it's like to grow up in the city's broken shelter system or live in public housing. I have known the tragedy of losing a loved one to gun violence that plagues our streets. But I also know what makes our community strong. I have worked with countless community groups, senior centers, and block associations that work to improve our neighborhoods every single day. And as a member of the Speaker's team, I know how government can and must work to serve the people. As our next council member, I intend to continue the Speaker's work in our community and build upon her leadership. I will work to improve our public housing and fight to ensure that our children have the tools that they need to succeed. On Tuesday, September 12th, join me, Diana Ayala, Democrat candidate for city council. Together, we can work to build a better future for East Harlem and the South Bronx.
Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, The Amsterdam News and Gotham Gazette is pleased to bring you a debate among the Democratic candidates running for city council in District 8. Hi, I'm Diane Collier, and I am a longtime resident and serve as the chair of Manhattan Community Board 11 in East Harlem. The New York City primaries will be held on Tuesday, September 12th, for offices from mayor through the city council. The winners of these primaries, like this one in Council District 8, will be the Democratic nominees in November's general election. District 8 covers the East Harlem, El Barrio, Randall's Island, Ward's Island in Manhattan and parts of the Bronx. City Council Speaker Melissa Mark-Viverito currently represents the district but is not eligible to run again because of term limits. We've invited all of the Democratic candidates who are able to join us here today to keep their responses to one minute and any rebuttals they may have to 30 seconds. The candidates are seated in random drawing, starting from my left. We have Diana Ayala, Robert Rodriguez, and Tamika Mappe. Welcome, candidates, and thank you for being here. My first question goes to Ms. Mappe. Ms. Mappe, why are you running for this office, and what are your specific qualifications to represent and serve this community?
I'm running for this office because our community needs a change. And what makes me qualified for this office is my 20 years of public service, numerous community activism, from minimum wage to family law reform, to senior support, to being a PTA president of the school, being a school leadership team support member. So that's what makes me qualified to run this seat.
Robert Rodriguez, the same question.
Sure. As someone born and raised in East Harlem and has spent the last 15 years serving in the community, first as a community board member, then eventually as community board chair as a volunteer, and then having had the opportunity to represent the East Harlem part of the district for the last six years, we've been making that effort to fight for affordable housing and make sure that we meet the needs of the residents and get the Second Avenue subway to come up to 125th Street and get funding for NYCHA. And I'm proud to have had the opportunity to represent us in the Assembly, but now this is a unique opportunity to bring that experience to the city level with the opportunity to represent this district in the city council. And I think having that experience and having won those battles in Albany and being able to bring the benefit of that experience to bear in this open seat for the city council can make a difference on what our future is going to look like over the next five to 10 years. And I think I'm uniquely experienced to be able to make the changes that we need and make forward a path to affordability and sustainability for all the residents of the district.
Diana Ayala, the same question.
I've been in this community for over 20 years, serving both the East Harlem and South Bronx parts of the district, first as a caseworker at Corsey Senior Center. I've worked at the Carver Houses Senior Center as a program director and spent the last 11 years working for the New York City Council Speaker, which has afforded me an opportunity to work both in East Harlem and the South Bronx, working with resident leaders, working with our local senior centers, working with tenant, community activists, and a lot of community-based organizations. I have a very good understanding of the district, of the needs in the district, and have been working it very aggressively, bringing in money for playground renovations, for security enhancements, new features in the local senior centers, expanding services in our after-school programs. And I feel that my personal experiences also have weighed in on my decision to run. I am a person who has been a survivor of domestic violence. I have been in shelter, I have been hungry, and I think that, you know, it gives me a different perspective on how we do policy in city government.
What do you consider the most pressing needs of the district? And what would be your first order of business when elected? Robert, we'll start with you on that question.
I think affordable housing is without a doubt the most pressing need, and it has to be a threefold effort. One is preserving everything that we have, specifically New York City public housing and our Mitchell Lama housings, both of which I've worked actively on while in the Assembly. Before I got to the state and represented us, the state gave no money for public housing. Today, we can say that there's $300 million slated from the state to go into public housing, and that's important for the future of NYCHA. Mitchell Lamas, and we have fought to make sure that developments like Lakeview and Franklin Plaza and 1199 have resources so that they can stay the backbone of working-class housing in our community. And then thirdly, any new affordable housing, you know, we worked very hard to make sure that there were affordable housing guidelines on our community board to define affordability levels and make sure that developments that come in actually meet those levels. And that's for everybody, those people who make as little as $15,000, who are on social security, up to as much as, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 for working families. That has to be our mantra moving forward if we're going to really address the crisis that we have in our community.
Diana.
I agree with the Assembly Member, housing is number one on the list of priorities. Preservation of units, existing units, is very important to me. Bringing in more resources to public housing is also really important because we want to be able to not only preserve that vital housing stock, but also enhance the quality of life of the residents that live there now. We've put in a lot of measures through the city council to protect tenants' rights. I think that we could, there's always room, you know, for more. Public safety is also an issue that I'm, you know, very, I feel really strongly about as a person who has been personally affected by gun violence and a resident and a constituent in this district where we continue to see, you know, gun violence happening day in and day out. That's something that I would like to pay a little bit more closer attention to.
Tamika.
Affordable housing, making sure that NYCHA is accountable for all the repairs that need to be done inside of all NYCHA development, making sure HPD is held accountable to do their repairs on their end, making sure that when we do luxury housing is for everybody and have a mixed income development for every income bracket to stay in there, regardless if you make $500 a month, up to $3,000 a month. I feel that you need to be able to live together. And actually, working with the Department of Superintendent, working with my parent coordinators, and working with my principals inside the schools and trying to get the funding they need, make sure they have a working SMARTboard, make sure they have gym classes, make sure they have an actual library to actually go to and do the research that they need. So that's the issues I'll be working on when I get elected.
Thank you. The next question is constituent services are a main function of each council member. What services do you envision to be the most needed, and what will you do to effectively provide such service? And we'll start with Diana.
Well, I was the director of constituent services for the New York City Council Speaker for seven years before becoming deputy chief of staff, and I take that, I took that responsibility very seriously because the bulk of the issues that come, the way that we legislate is really based on the issues that are coming to the office. For instance, we put in tenant protection bills. We introduced tenant protection bills based on the information that we were receiving from residents that live in East Harlem that were illegally being pushed out. I think that we've done an outstanding job. We've also been able, through that process, through that unit, to bring in free legal services for NYCHA residents, free legal services for undocumented residents. We've been able to bring in CCRB clinics also to the district via the constituent services unit. So I think it's something that's really important.
Tamika.
I kind of laugh at myself and say that I'm going to have the most committees out of everybody because I truly believe it takes community to run a community. So I'll be holding monthly committee meetings for all constituents so they can come to the office and actually decide what we need to be done so I can take it back to my colleagues and press their issues. That's most important to them. So I'm going to have a youth committee, I'm going to have a senior committee, LGBT community, a small business committee as well, so they can know what resources out there to get their businesses up and running. So I'm all about community, and I don't want somebody, just when they have a problem, come into the office. I want them to be proactive and making sure that the office is welcome, and they can come in at any given time and get the voice to be heard.
And Robert.
Sure. As Assembly Member, that's the main part of our function and our responsibility is to make sure that our doors are open and that we're addressing the needs of our constituents on a daily basis. And there's no question that the number-one constituent complaint or need continues to be around housing, keeping people who are able, who are in their apartments to stay in their apartments, which means that we've dealt with countless number of issues around repairs for NYCHA, eviction prevention services, making sure that we are providing access to folks who are looking for new apartments or housing within the district, but also making sure that we are addressing the variety of needs and services that people have. We also have significant issues around Medicaid access and people understanding what they can and can't get, particularly a lot of concern around what's happening in the discussions on federal levels about Medicaid and potential cuts there and what's going to happen to our community if that happens in institutions like Metropolitan Hospital and Lincoln Hospital. So I think those are just a few of the issues we're going to continue to make sure that we provide stellar services, much like we have in the Assembly, and hopefully bring forward that mantra into the city council.
So let's turn our attention to a subject that you did bring up, tenant harassment. How do you plan to protect tenants from being ousted from their homes by extreme and sometimes aggressive measures by landlords? And let's start with you, Tamika.
Well, I'm going to help them get the legal services that they need, and if I need to go to court with them and be by their side, I will do that. So that's what I'll be doing.
Diana.
So I think that we've done really well in terms of, you know, putting in laws that protect tenants, you know, citywide. And so the Tenant Protection Act allows residents to sue their landlords for harassment, and harassment is defined a little bit more broadly because of that bill. We also, again, have legal, free legal services in the district office, but we've also, the city council has also funded free legal services in the district through the Tenant Protection Unit to help residents that are maybe being displaced because of gentrification. I think that we've also held a numerous amount of workshops on tenants, know your rights. We organized a whole bunch of buildings, which is really important because getting the word out has been really challenging. How do we, we have all of these laws that protect residents, but not every resident is as informed as they should be or could be about, you know, the laws that protect them. And so getting the word out has been, you know, pretty challenging. We've worked really aggressively again through the workshops to try to get the information out, but I think that we've done, we've done well. There's always more to do.
Robert.
Sure. Along those lines, as was mentioned, and it can't be reiterated enough, the work is never done, whether we talk about New York State and the Tenant Protection Unit and the support that comes there. Having created that three years ago was important, but we are continuing to hear complaints about people feeling pushed out by their landlords because of the aggressive rise in rents that have happened there. And many of them are either have language barriers or have documentation status and as a result, stay silent as these things continue to happen. So of course, right to counsel is a very important part that was recently passed by the city council, which should help to address this, but there's no question that there needs to be more enforcement of these activities, both, you know, in the city level and on the state level. When you, when you report these things, they're not often addressed immediately, and by that point, you know, you've already felt a significant amount of harassment and are trying to figure out what to do next. So I think making sure that we continue to put resources towards enforcement and making sure that we do the outreach and support folks who are experiencing that continues to be important.
So you've all mentioned NYCHA, and as we all know, East Harlem has the second-largest percentage of NYCHA housing in a district. So I'm going to turn our attention to a question concerning it. We all know about the disrepair and all of the issues that our NYCHA residents are experiencing. How would you propose to improve the quality of life for those living in our public housing in East Harlem? And let's start with Diana.
I think that we've done some of that by investing capital dollars for repairs and security measures to the environment. While people are really appreciative of that, I don't think that it really touches on the personal aspect of a resident, of living in public housing with mold issues, you know, slow timeliness of repairs. And so we've done a lot of work. Obviously, we have worked very closely with Community Voices Heard, which is a community-based organization that has been lobbying Congress, you know, to push for further funding on the federal level. We've also been pushing, you know, very aggressively for the state to put in the funds that they hadn't put in since the late 1990s. And, you know, we're going to start having some serious discussions about how do we, how do we bring in more revenue to protect this vital housing stock and to, you know, bring it up to code.
Robert.
I think everything has to be on the table to address this, and all levels of government have to be participating. I mentioned earlier the state participation, that needs to increase, and that's something that I think would, I can be helpful in terms of leading those efforts, whether at the city council or in any other capacity, but hopefully there, because we know that there's more that can be done. There's also additional funding sources that have not been revisited. We've talked about Battery Park City as a potential area to get millions of dollars into New York City public housing because we know that the $17 billion of need means that our roofs don't get repaired, elevators don't work, mold doesn't get remediated, our playgrounds don't get fixed, we have lesser security cameras. So I think everyone has to come to the table to really address a solution for the 400,000 residents who live in public housing and deserve better. So I think, you know, being able to bridge that gap, understanding the city has made a contribution, that's not enough, the state needs to make more of a contribution, but together, that, only together can we solve that problem.
Tamika.
Going to just go to the Department of Housing at the city council level and asking on him why there's no bills that have been helping NYCHA residents and trying to get the ball rolling. And if that means that I have to sue NYCHA to make sure they get the repairs that they need, that's the job I'm going to be taking to do that because no one should be able to live without cooking their food within five months, without getting an apartment shown to them, and then it's nasty and a disrepair, and if they don't take it, now they go all the way back to the bottom of the list. That needs to stop, and the only way we can stop that is by making sure that the housing committee is pretty much accountable for their actions. They've been going so long unchecked, and no one's been checking these housing authorities. So it's my job when I get in there to actually check them and making sure things is getting cleaned up.
So you know that the administration, Bill de Blasio's administration and the previous one, is looking at private and public partnerships as it relates to solving the NYCHA problems. So where do you stand on this issue, particularly as it relates to infill?
I mean, we've had, we've had some infill projects in the district already. We've seen at Millbrook Houses, we have a 100% affordable senior development, which has been, you know, really well received by the constituents in that, in that part of the district. Obviously, we are in need of housing, right? So that's, that's one of the issues that infill kind of helps to alleviate, right? It's how do we bring in? We lose almost 400 units of housing a year to these stabilizations, so we need to build, right? We have an opportunity to kind of do that in public housing. I don't think that is the idea that, you know, we're all really excited about, but I think the reality that we're facing now is that we want to, the goal here is to preserve, to save, you know, public housing and to keep it intact. We, you know, they serve the neediest, you know, individuals, people with the lowest income brackets, you know, depend on these apartments. And so how do we preserve it? So infill might be a conversation that we want to have. I would love to be able to see, I would love to see that it's beneficial, that we're bringing in the necessary resources. I think it's, you know, vital public land, and if we're going to sacrifice it, if you will, then it has to be, it can't be at the expense of the residents that live there. I think that they need to lead... I think that they need to lead that conversation. And I also feel that, you know, there has to be some evidence-based, you know, data that's, that reflects that the revenue is worth the investment.
Tamika.
I don't believe in infill, because when you do infill, you're taking away my parking spaces for the residents that's there. You're taking away parks for my children. So there's a lot of housing that the city can't preserve. They're just, just warehousing it. So they need to look at the existing housing that they have and fix that up and making sure it's accessible before they start taking away parking lots and public parks away from our children. So I'm totally against infill.
And Robert.
I think all solutions have to be on the table, both for dealing with the housing crisis, but also addressing the NYCHA funding crisis. And I think, you know, infill has to be considered, but there has to be a significant benefit for the community. We've seen it, as was mentioned, in Millbrook, but we've seen a different scenario when we look at homes, which is currently in the Assembly District, where I don't think there is enough benefit. I think what has been proposed is, you know, 50% market rate and 50% affordable, and then a one-time fee of $25 million that would go towards NYCHA. And it's not even clear how much of that would go towards dealing with improvements in that particular development. So I think there, you know, is, has to be a significant benefit for the residents of the community, has to address some of the repair issues and the capital issues in that development, and it has to be clear what's happening. I think one of the issues around infills, there has to be a community benefit agreement tied to these potential developments that clearly identify what are the residents getting out of these, these deals? And how is it helping their quality of life in their developments, since they're the ones that are being asked to sacrifice so much?
So NYCHA has served as a means of affordability for many, many citizens in New York City. Now let's turn our attention to affordability. Affordability housing is very rare and it's shrinking. Is New York City's Affordable Housing Plan working, in your opinion? And let's start with you, Robert.
I think more needs to be done. I think 200,000 units while is a great goal is not enough to meet what we know is a significant demand. I mean, just on New York City public housing, we have a waitlist of almost 200,000 people looking for, for housing there. And that's not counting the tens of thousands of applications that we get for every single development that we look to bring online. So I think we have to work aggressively at preserving and giving people an opportunity to stay in their homes, but also think about how we look at increasing the number of units that, that we bring online. And I think that's an important conversation in terms of dealing with those demand issues and then the affordability question, making sure that's available to the residents who live there as well as those who are, who represent working families.
Tamika.
No, it's, it's not enough, because right now, when a new development comes in play, they want you to make between $30,000 to $33,000. And as you know, half of the district doesn't even make that. So my job when I become City Council member is trying to reevaluate them numbers and making sure that people that makes $1,000 a month, or $12,000 a year, or $22,000 a year, and $19,000 a year would be able to qualify for that housing. And restructuring in our lottery system, because, you know, your name, you go through this lottery system, you get a little card back, and then you don't know where you at. And then, you know, as life goes on, you're kind of like, okay, I didn't get qualified, but you don't really have time to follow up. But you're never going to get into that development with a flaw lottery system like that. So it's going to be my job to re-assist a new lottery system. So when you actually get a lottery back, you know where you stand at all times. So you can be looking like, okay, I'm that much closer to what I want to be.
And Diana.
I think that is a start. I think that it's afforded people, a lot of people in this city, an opportunity to get, you know, access to affordable decent, you know, housing units. I think that, having been the Director of Constituent Services for a long time, you know, the information that I was receiving from the constituents is that there is a huge demand for these apartments. I don't think that they do enough for the people on the lower income bracket, but I do believe in mixed housing and I see the need, based again on my conversations with constituents, that would otherwise qualify, but the impediment has been mostly primarily based upon credit background, credit checks and previous evictions. So if you were living in an apartment that you couldn't afford and you got evicted, or your landlord was a slumlord and you took him to court and you, you know, ended up losing and were evicted, those became an impediment to lottery apartments. And so the, the mayor has, you know, he's, he's made some changes to that so that credit is no longer a factor and that if you have been evicted, you know, there has to be a more rigorous process for eliminating you. But I think that is a start. I think we can do more, and we obviously need to build more if we're losing 400 units almost a year to destabilization.
And speaking to Diana, it's true, we are losing 400 units every year to destabilization. And how would you address this issue, Robert?
So I think when we talk about preservation and rent stabilization, really making sure that we deal with legislation, that so much of it happens on the state level and hoping that we can deal with MCIs and capital improvements and not allowing rents to come up after folks leave. So that, that ends up becoming an ongoing conversation that has to happen between the city and the state to make sure that we retain our tenant protection laws and continue to enforce that. So that, notwithstanding that conversation, making sure that we can keep people in their homes, making sure that those developments that are affordable stay affordable. That's why those developments that are our seniors, our Section 8202s are so important to keeping our seniors in their home, particularly because they, they make the least under the most vulnerable in our community. When we talk about our NYCHAs, making sure we get repairs and making sure that we can keep people in their homes and that they're, you know, able to stay there, because we know that it is so hard to, to find the number of new developments necessary for so many people. And then with rent stabilization, we mentioned tenant harassment and enforcement as being the ways that we deal with keeping those units in rent stabilization.
Tamika.
Pretty much, I will, oh, how am I going to deal with this? Sorry.
If you would like, I can come back to you.
Yeah, please do.
Diana.
I mean, I, you know, I, again, I agree with, with the Assembly member in terms of what the state should be doing. MCI increases, you know, create a significant, impose a significant financial burden on families. And if your landlord is asking for an MCI increase because he invested $30,000 in fixing, you know, maybe the windows in the, in the, in the building, this MCI stays with you for the rest of your lifetime as that, as a resident of that unit. I don't think that those laws are fair. Unfortunately, a lot of the buildings, a lot of the housing stock that we have, and again, we've done a lot around preservation, I am very strongly in favor of that. But because so, so much of the housing stock that we have is so old and the rents have already exceeded, you know, the amounts that make them affordable, because we say rent stabilized, but rent stabilization for some people means $2,700 still, and that's not affordable. And so unfortunately, we need to build some, you know, units, and we haven't really seen that a lot of that in the 8th District.
Okay. So we need to really pass the Housing and Not Warehouse Act to making sure that people would be able to get into these housing, because we have housing there, it's just being warehousing and trying to figure out when is the next big buck is going to come so they can sell it and have it for market rate. So we just, when I get in the office, I would just be passing the Housing and Not Warehouse Act if it's not being passed by then.
President Trump, as we all know, is looking at cuts within the HUD funding and many of the tax credits and rent burden programs that are coming currently to the state. And there is even a discussion at the Congress level about removing the community preference associated with a lot of our tax credits today. How do you feel about this? And how would you, in the job of the council, would ensure that our people are protected if this should happen? I know it's a loaded question, and if you want to think about it for a few minutes, but this is a serious issue, because whatever happens in terms of the rezoning, any building that is built in New York City, 25%, as well, or 30% is mandatory inclusionary housing. And generally, as you know, the community board has always advocated for 50% of those, those particular units to go to our residents. But if this law passes, then what, what do we have left? So with that, I'm going to start with you, Robert.
Community preference is one of the most important parts of this program. And I know we have significant headwinds when we talk about the federal government, and I think a lot about what we're thinking about, either on the state or the city level, is how do we go about doing this on our own? But there's no question that when we talk about this, you know, we have to continue to have our legislative leaders and, and the federal government represent us and fight to make sure that, that those tax credits and benefits don't go away. But I, I can't envision a future without community preference, where we're building developments in our community that our residents may not even be eligible for. I mean, that, that take, there's already a disparity and some inequity in terms of the lottery process and, and how many people are potentially able to qualify for that. If you take away the community preference, then we're, you know, we're literally, you know, have no, no insurance that any benefit of what happens in our community is actually going to go to the people who invested in this community and to make it, make it what it is and make it as, as great as it is. So I think we have to continue to fight for that and look at other ways. If that goes away, that we can create equitable preference-based systems. And, and if the federal government isn't giving the money, then they can't tell us what to do with that, by the way. So I think we would have to go on our own and make our own programs.
Diana.
I mean, community preferences, I understand what they're saying. They, they feel that, you know, the community preference excludes certain, you know, individuals from living in certain communities. I get that. But they, it also offers individuals that live in my district an opportunity to stay in the, in the communities that, you know, they were born and raised in. And so I think that, you know, that it's important that we do everything that we can to preserve them.
And Tamika.
Well, like I always do, roll up my sleeve and fight like heck, making sure I lobby the state, lobby the Congress and be in the faces at every given time, making sure that I pass bills to actually protect us in case the federal just leave us down. And always making sure that I got my hand on the pulse, so when everything is going down, I'm there with my colleagues to pass that bill to protect us.
So as you walk through East Harlem, there are a lot of empty storefronts, and if they're not empty yet, they're in the process of closing. How would you protect the mom and pops that we came to know so well in our community? And what would you do to help to stimulate more businesses and continue, and hopefully grow them in East Harlem? And we'll start with you, Tamika.
Okay, perfect. As a small business owner myself, there's a lot of tax credits and tax laws that the small business owners do not know, right? So my job as the City Council is to go to each mom and pop stores and say, hey, there's a credit for you hiring employees, there's a credit if you want to redo your, your storefront, there's a credit if you want to do training and, you know, to upgrade and this, and hire locally, and have a collaboration with the Doe Foundation, and have a collaboration with Youth Bill, and have a collaboration with Urban Upbound, so they can keep their pipeline to grow and have employees come in. Because without the small business owners knowing all these type of credits is out there for them, that's how they're losing business, you know, and they're going to be closing down. Like my favorite Kathy Flowers, she's closing down because she can't afford the rent. But if she knew that there was a grant out there for small business women owner, she'd be able to stay in her storefront. So my job as a City Councilwoman is to make sure they know every tax credit, every opportunity it is to stay in the rent, and actually pass a bill that will cap small business owners' rent for going up day after day after day.
Robert.
So I think we have to look at incentive programs that incentivize property owners to not go for the highest bidder at all times. And, and also think about how do you, you know, make sure that if you have vacant storefronts, you know, for an extended amount of time, that, you know, you're not allowed to just warehouse that until you wait for, you know, large-scale businesses like Duane Reade to come in and, and, and otherwise you'll leave your, your storefront vacant. So I think if we incentivize, you know, the, the property owner to, incentivize and/or penalize them for, for leaving it vacant for extended periods is, is a way that we can stimulate the conversation about getting small businesses back in, because there are a number of tax credits that we've advocated for. There's the Youth Works Tax Credit for small businesses to be able to hire in our community. And really, the issue is around that property owner and whether or not they're going to make a lease with a small business that they can afford. And oftentimes, you know, the complaint is, well, our taxes are too high and therefore, you know, we have to get more rent from, from the businesses. Well, then let's think about a tax credit program that incentivizes you to rent to that small mom and pop business. And then, and also look at, you know, if, if there are extended periods of vacant storefronts, you know, how are we helping you as a, as a city to be able to find a commercial tenant that, that makes sense? And how are we helping to support that business so that it's successful once you do make that lease to them, so they don't go out of business?
Diana.
Yeah, I agree. I think that being able to provide some sort of tax incentive to the landlords, because the unfortunate reality is that a lot of these small businesses don't own the property in which they, you know, coexist. And so offering some sort of tax credit to the landlords is an incentive to keep these small businesses open and at rents that they can afford is really important in terms of keeping these institutions alive.
So now we're going to go to some lightning round questions.
Yeah.
And they can either be yes or no, one sentence within the 30 seconds or 10 seconds we're going to give you. And some of, let's start with the first question. Do you support congestion pricing, realizing that we have the RFK Bridge, we have 138th Street Bridge, all coming through East Harlem? And obviously, there will be significant angst from people who have to go across those bridges into the Bronx. Diana, do you support it?
I will give you the very quick answer. I'm not, it's not a yes, it's not a no. I'm open to any conversation that is beneficial to the constituents that I choose to, that I would like to represent.
Thank you. Robert?
Absolutely. I'm the lead sponsor of a Move New York bill that actually has a better solution than I think just congestion pricing, that actually provides benefit for local residents and communities to make decisions about transportation in their district and makes the tolling fair for everybody across the city.
And Tamika.
Yes.
Have you served on your community board? If yes, which one? Robert.
I have a few gray hairs as a result of serving on my community board, and I've chaired Community Board 11 for, for a number of years as well. So a proud, a proud member of Community Board 11.
Diana.
I haven't served, but I spent a lot, enough time there to feel like a member.
Yes. Tamika.
No, I keep on getting rejected when I apply.
This is a loaded question. Do you support the mayor's proposal of a 2.5% mansion tax for property sales on homes priced at $2 million and above?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. What are we using it for?
That's the question, yes.
Yes.
Yes, you do. And the last thing is, how do you feel about charter schools? Again, yes or no, or just a very quick answer?
I'm not opposed to charter schools. I'm a parent and I, I don't, I wouldn't want anyone to tell me where my children can or cannot go to school. I just have a problem with the co-location. I don't think that they're done properly. And we have, we then start to see issues of overcrowding and loss of space that could be used recreationally for music instruction, for other things.
Yes, but more needs to be done on the co-location question and English-language learners and special ed.
I believe that when you have a charter school, you should be able to either, when you co-locate, share the resources with the whole school and not just keep it to yourself or find your own space so you can have your own dollars. I think that should be self-funded and not taken away from our public school funds so our children can learn.
Another question, rezoning or not? In recent years, many residents of East Harlem have expressed concerns about gentrification and the loss of our local culture. If elected, how are you planning to preserve El Badio's cultural character? And let's start with you, Tamika.
Well, first of all, I think when people move into our community, they should be able to adapt to the community that they live in. And if that doesn't work, making sure I have a town hall about diversity, so everybody know how to co-mingle together, having cultural fairs that's in the district, because I know when my mom grew up in East Harlem, she said it was like a, a community fair almost every Saturday, where everybody in the neighborhood comes out together and play together. So I'm trying to bring that back into the community so everybody knows how to work well with each other.
Robert.
Culture is a very important part of our community. You know, it has represented all different ethnicities and, of folks for, for generations. And I think that's what makes East Harlem a real melting pot. So being able to continue to preserve that in a couple of ways. One of the ideas and one of the reasons why I have issue with the rezoning is there should be inclusion of a cultural arts corridor in district, both either at 106th Street and at 125th Street, to make sure that there is a sense of place included in those main thoroughfairs and corridors that really represent the community. In addition, is making sure that our smaller arts organizations get some funding. And I'm happy that the, the City Council and the mayor has started to address this issue, and we've been fighting to get funding on the state level to make sure that smaller arts organizations that represent our culture actually get funding to continue to do the fairs and the, and the, and the different activities that help reflect, you know, the, the diversity of our community. So I think it has to be a, a measure of funding and making sure that we draw a line in the sand, that if you're going to make changes in our community and redevelop, that it reflects our community and our culture at the same time.
And Diana.
Yeah, I think that we have the benefit of living in a community that's very culturally rich. rich. And I think that we've started to do, to make some enrolls in terms of preserving parts of the history and the culture in the East Harlem part of the district. We've invested a lot of funding into La Marqueta, for instance. For many years, it was underutilized. And so now we have active programming there every weekend and most days during the week, preserving those festivals and those fairs that represent who we are as a fabric of the community, I think is vital. And I think that we do that through the community board, right? We appoint people, individuals that are like-minded and that have the same sentiment, because we don't want to see what makes East Harlem special or what makes the South Bronx special disappear as new people are coming in.
Thank you all for that. We've reached that point in the program where each of you will be given an opportunity for a closing statement. And I'd like to start with you, Diana.
So I'm Diana Ayala. Again, I am a constituent of the 8th District as well. I was, actually lived in both parts of the district. I've lived in the South Bronx, as well as the East Harlem part of the district now, where I'm raising my family. My children go to PS57. They were born in Mount Sinai Hospital. I've spent 20 years of service in this community, because my personal life experiences have kind of led me to become more civically engaged. As I said, I have been a victim of domestic violence, I've been in shelter, I have been a single parent, I have been a teenage parent. And a lot of these experiences have allowed me a unique ability to help other individuals in my community. And I think that I've done that well. I think that the fact that I have so much community support supports that fact, and I would love to be able to build on that work as your next city council member.
Thank you. Robert?
I'm Assembly Member Rodriguez, someone who was born and raised in East Harlem, been there for generations. My family comes out of Carver Houses and had the good fortune of going to public schools in East Harlem. And I'm a product of what I think is a rich and diverse experience and community that we have in East Harlem that we want to continue. I've had the good fortune to serve on the community board as a volunteer and to begin those fights for the last 15 years to make sure that our community is represented in all levels, whether we're talking about affordable housing, creating job opportunities in our community, and making sure that as a representative in the Assembly for the last six years, we fight for equity, for those things that we deserve in our community, including making sure that we have access to transportation. The Second Avenue subway coming up north from 96th to 125th Street almost didn't happen if we didn't put that fight and make sure we got the money restored, fighting for New York City public housing, because we know how important it is. So I've fought those battles in Albany, and I look forward to taking that experience and bringing it to bear in the city council, so that we can put both of those important parts of government together to come up with solutions, solutions that deal with the problems of our community now and over the next four years.
Thank you. And Tamika?
Hi, I'm Tamika Map. I want you to vote for me, because you actually see yourself in my shoes, wanting to have change in the community, wanting somebody that's always going to be present, wanting someone that's accessible and that you can reach out to, no matter which way you reach out to, someone that comes with bold, progressive ideals, like moving the minimum wage to $20 per hour, making sure NYCHA is held accountable, making sure that we strengthen our youth services, making sure that we pass the Right to Know law, so our kids can stop being harassed in the streets by the police officers. And if you answer all that, that question is Tamika Map, then you vote for me. I'm number two on the ballot. You can reach me on Facebook at East Harlem Committee for Good Government. I will talk to you back there. There's resources on there already for you to know what's going on in your community. So I'm number two on the ballot, and I'm Tamika Map.
So I want to thank you all and all of the candidates for participating in today's debate. The primary elections will be held on Tuesday, September 12. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, l w v n y c dot org or m n n dot org, and click on Race to Represent. Please remember, only voters enrolled in a political party having a primary may vote in a primary election. Thank you for watching Race to Represent on Manhattan Neighborhood Network, and goodbye.